Today's December tenth, two thousand fourteen. It's ten a.m. I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge the flag? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dan.
This morning we have non-essential donations.
Two thousand ninety-three dollars and twenty cents for tax years two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and as correction of ticket number four three three one nine. fiduciary orders as of December tenth, and as a separate matter, you'll be dealing with the estate of William Park Jr. Minutes for November five. General County vouchers, one hundred ninety-four thousand eight eighteen thirty-six. General County Fund Purchasing Card, thirteen thousand six sixty-three twenty-four. Cole Severance Fund, six thousand five ninety-nine eighteen. Camp Muffley, one thousand five eighty-seven ninety-six. Camp Muffley Purchasing Card, one oh five forty-five. Chestnut Ridge Park, five thirty-five thirty-one. Mason Dixon Park, one thousand six sixty-five eighteen. Mason Dixon Purchasing Card, three eighty-eight forty-nine. Magistrate Court Fund, two fifty-nine twenty. Nine one one purchasing card, one eighty-seven thirty-six. Nine one one cash, one thousand fifty. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, nine hundred eleven dollars fifty-four cents, for a total of two twenty-one, seven seventy-one forty-seven.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Does Renata have anything?
No.
No? Discussion of William Park Jr. Estate. Are you here, sir, on Mr. Park? Will you please rise and identify yourself and give your address for the record, please?
I am William Jason Clark here, and I didn't expect all this. I thought it was gonna be me and...
No, that's all right. No problem. We're... Just relax. We won't bite.
I just have an issue with the state. His wife is, you know, driving the truck. He has like four different vehicles left in his name. She valued everything under, lay under value, and so it wouldn't go to probate court. And there just needs to be someone to oversee it besides her, who's, you know, driving trucks and cars are still under, you know, in the wheel, and it's just a mess.
Well, read your letter. You're asking for the fiduciary commissioner to be appointed?
Yes.
And you understand that will involve some payment that you might have to pay personally?
Yes, exactly.
And are you willing to accept that responsibility if you have to pay anything?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
It sounds over like fifty-some dollar, and I maybe, they had rates on there.
Okay. Will you find that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the main thing. Anyone else here on the William Park Jr. Estate? Anyone else here on the William J. Park Estate? No one else out there?
No one out here.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, so basically, he's accepted it. This is a small state, and I always hesitate to appoint fiduciary commissioner because it could end up costing people a lot of money for a minimal estate. But I understand your concerns, but that's why I wanted you to be here, so you could express, so you could understand that there might be some costs, and you're willing to accept those.
I think since he is willing to accept them and he understands conditions, and he has some legitimate questions, I would like to move that we appoint a fiduciary to review the matter.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you for coming.
Very good. That wouldn't have hurt us.
I hope it works out.
Now, you can stay and make public comments afterwards, too.
That didn't work.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Take care. Okay, now we got, well, we don't have to wait on this. Lana Smith, Region Six, regarding right-of-way.
Hi there.
How you doing? Would you please identify the other people with you as well, so you can have it for the record?
My name is Lana Smith. This is Susan Dalton. She's in our acquisition department. And Sheena Hunt, she's our project manager for the Clay Patel Public Service District Water Project.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm here at the commission meeting today. We met with Mr. Giambioni the other day regarding a right-of-way that is sought by the Clay Patel Public Service District for their water project. They need to lay a water line on Route Seven in front of the core community building. It is gonna be right off of the DOH right-of-way, therefore, since we cannot use the DOH right-of-way in this particular area, we do have to approach upon personal property, and this property belonging to the Montague County Commission, because it is where the core community building is. It is a permanent easement that is being sought, and the temporary is twenty-five feet, but the permanent is a fifteen-foot water line right-of-way. It is used for public water. There is an agreement that you guys should have a copy of.
Yes.
They will restore the lands once construction is over. Construction is messy. It will be muddy. It will be nasty during construction, but they will restore the land once it's over with it. This project has not gone out the bit. We do not know who the contractor is as of yet.
So you're just asking for us to sign the contract to move to get it right-of-way?
To bring the easement.
That's correct.
And...
Now, is this easement for a pit or just a line?
Right. At the one end of the easement, there is a bore pit. A bore pit, they'll dig a hole, they put a boring machine in. They're gonna bore under Route Seven. Once they do the bore, they'll pull the boring machine out, fill the pit in, grass it over, and that goes away.
Do you have any further questions?
No. I'll move that we sign the agreement for the right-of-way.
I'll second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You got your right-of-way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was painless, too. You can stay in your comfort.
We're building up.
Right. There we go. We were long. Letter from Sheriff Kisdine, payment of medical expenses. Captain Ralston, are you here representing Sheriff?
In case you, the commission had any questions, I do have just copies of each bill that the letter concerns, in case you would need that.
Being that this is my first time, and the payment was, how much money is it, like forty thousand or something?
Thirty-six thousand eight twenty-four thirty-nine and two thousand three seventy.
Could you just give it, without, I guess, what you can legally say and not publicly say, but since it's public funds, why are we paying thirty six? I mean, I'm really confused about this. And why can we not charge the state or the regional, because why do we have to pay when someone breaks the law and then they're in our custody, and we're paying thirty-six thousand for medical benefits?
Nor, at least historically, since I've been here, when we had a jail, the county actually had to pay any medical expenses for anybody in the county's custody. After the regional jail process started, anybody that we arrest, as in the sheriff's office, and both in our custody, and before they get into the state's custody, if there's a medical issue, then the county actually ends up with that bill as well. And that is what happened with these two.
Just, they're in our custody. They'll pay for the medical.
I can't say on TV.
We're responsible. We're responsible until the legal we are set.
That's not right. I mean, I'm gonna just say it. That's not right. I mean, I can see some real abuses coming on this, and unfortunately, knock on wood, we don't have that, but I can see someone saying, "Well, before I go to the jail, I wanna go to," because I don't feel well, or, you know, and this is...
So it happened in the...
It's just not right. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's a frustration that I don't understand how, why, I mean, we have it, but why then, because we have this long distance anyway to drive them out there, why the North Central doesn't like pick up a percentage of it?
Well, they assume no responsibility until they're processed into their facility. So if we end up with somebody in our custody that has any kind of a medical issue, or they even state when they arrive at the regional jail that I'm having some kind of an issue, the nursing staff will not accept them.
Had it happen in magistrate court many times, when I ran in them, going over, they're standing there pacing back and forth, "I can't go to jail. I can't go." Oh, oh.
No, I, yeah.
They'll take them to the hospital, because they won't accept them down there until they go to the hospital and get a medical clearance.
Yes.
And guess who pays?
So where?
Paying for this county.
Okay. Now, I guess my question is to Diane, where do we come up with this money to pay this? I mean, because one of the problems I have is, you know, we have to have a line item, so we have to take it away from somewhere. If we have a...
Do we have to take it away from the other services you provide?
Or do we just take it out of the sheriff's department? Which I understand...
That's why he's asking you to pay it.
That's right.
It's breaking junk out of the sheriff's department.
What is the usual procedure? Do we just pay it and...
I will look for funds to pull out of different areas that are not totally dedicated.
Right. But that's not right.
Well, it does, it doesn't happen as often now, because we don't have the jail into the operation.
Exactly.
But they're very correct. Rachel will not take them, and they're our responsibility until they're delivered.
Is that something, whenever you all, I look at you, because you've been involved, that we could at least bring that up to see if there's not gonna be a portion maybe paid by the state or the North, to say that, you know, this could become a, because we have, unfortunately, so many people that we do arrest from different areas?
But they're respons, if Star City arrested them, Star City would be paying this bill.
Right.
If Morgantown arrested them, Morgantown would pay it, you know?
But even that, I think, is not, it's not right. I mean, if Granville or Westover does it, that's not, if we could at least look into that as a...
I can ask. You know, I can ask anything. I mean, I have no problem putting my hand out for almost anything, but this is the way it's been for decades, number one.
Okay.
And number two, the state's broke. They don't have any money, and they're gonna tell me that. They said, "We don't have any money. You got more money than we do." I've heard that two or three times.
Tell them to take it out of Tiff.
And this is a twenty percent discount.
And it is a twenty percent discount, so we need to acknowledge that.
It's a twenty percent discount.
We need to, that was given by the W D N Hospital.
Well, I mean, I...
We need to acknowledge that, so they did give us twenty percent.
As long as we can find it in the budget, I'll move that we pay, you know, pay the amount under complete...
Well, we had to, we had to, we gotta find it in the budget. And when someone else is in here crying or something, you can hold on to this letter and say, "Here."
That's thirty-four thousand dollars that could go to a lot of local nonprofit communities that, you know, that do things.
Actually, it's forty, actually, it's forty-three, forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand. I'm sorry, that's, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Well, a lot of things...
It's just frustrating. I do not agree with this.
So now that you know it's forty-three thousand, your motion's still good?
It's still good, unfortunately.
I'll second it. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Reluctantly, but it passed.
Reluctantly, but we understand.
Yeah, it wasn't the sheriff's who calls that. Any other items in correspondence? Okay. Unfinished business, discussion of holiday hours. My understanding was last night, and I don't know whether you trust the internet or not, I heard last night that President Barack Obama issued an executive order declaring the day after Christmas a federal holiday and giving all federal employees off. I heard that last night. That was on the internet.
Because on the internet, it must be true.
He got that, because we already declared it was taking the day after, so...
There.
Well, I have heard from elected officials, the tax office, the assessor's office, prosecuting attorney, county clerk, and county commissioner will be closed on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, so all the other elected officials agreed to close?
Yes. But unless the Supreme Court or the governor calls Friday a holiday, the circuit clerk's office will still have to be open. It will have to pass the...
Well, but she could have, she could have minimal staff.
Right.
But we'll still have to have a security here.
Right.
At least one person.
But, right. Then we have to keep the magistrate court building and building. But hopefully, they'll follow President Obama's lead. That's one executive order people probably won't complain about. I don't know. Maybe there will be some people who are anxious about it.
They'll find some.
Okay, so let's, let's have a motion. Now, we're gonna have a half day, we're gonna include everything, and a half day on Christmas Eve.
And the thirty-first.
We will be meeting that morning.
Right.
The twenty-sixth, and a half day on the...
Thirty-first.
Thirty-fifth.
That's, yeah, I so move.
I second that. I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Join the ranks of President Barack Obama, giving him the holiday.
Well, you just...
The esteemed city of Westover, who led the fight. Okay. We sat there, and if we hear from, if we hear from the Supreme Court or the governor saying we can close everything down...
Yes, and we'll post notices on the doors appropriately, no matter what the situation is.
Right. Okay. New business. Not any more, any more unfinished business?
No.
New business, discussion and consideration of service animal policy.
Basically, what we're trying to do is uniform all the buildings that the county are in charge of, and since we've had several situations, we felt rather than singling out one individual or one person, we felt that we should equalize it, so everyone is treated correctly, and basically, it states that the service animals, any service animal, is permitted anywhere in the buildings, but we want to stop any other sort of person bringing in an animal or whatever to, you know, to the building. And I think it's just uniform. It's also important that we're gonna be moving to the new judicial building, and what we're trying to do is uniform some things. I also think this is also gonna go along with some of the suggestions and ideas. We're looking for security. So we're just, we're doing a number of different policies to try and uniform everything, so everyone's treated equally, and that's, that's why I would move this forward.
Well, I think that's, that's critical, because you can't treat people differently. If you don't have a policy preventing any animals other than service animals, then that's what our policy is. We're allowing service animals to enter. But this is a directive to all security officers to monitor any animal brought into the building as to whether it's a service animal or not, and that applies to all our buildings, including in the parks and every place else, because we definitely have, we definitely have a problem with maintenance and damage and all, so...
And also, it doesn't go into effect till January one, so I wanna make sure that, so I move, yeah, I move it so that it becomes effective January one. Do we need to read this, or...
You can. It's a policy. You can read it.
Oh, sure, I'll read it. "Policy relating to use of service animals only in county-owned buildings. West Virginia Code five dash fifteen dash four mandates that any person with a disability shall have the same right as the other persons to pull and for use of public facilities and places. Effective January one, two thousand fifteen, it is the intent of the commission to permit service animals only within any county-owned building. A service animal means any guide dog, signal dog, or other animal individually trained to do work or perform tasks for the benefit of any individual with a disability, including but not limited to guiding individuals with impaired vision, alerting individuals with impaired hearing, providing minimal protection or rescue work, pulling a wheelchair, or fetching dropped items. This shall also include animals used for assistance of persons with diabetic conditions. This policy will pertain to all public buildings in the Montague County Park system, example, Camp Muffley, Chestnut Ridge Park, and the Mason Dixon Historical Park. Service animals shall be permitted in county-owned buildings for short training periods when requested by certified instructors. Security officers will monitor entrances to all county-owned buildings, current and future, and will have the authority to stop individuals entering with animals other than those described above. This policy is being adopted for the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens using county-owned buildings." I so move.
I'll second that. I got a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, rest, request for duplicate certificate of sale. That was, see, do we have it on the back here? Go ahead, Diane.
We had a request from Mark Myers for replacement of a certificate of sale, number one three two two seven, ticket number two six eight three zero, and the tax office has this ready. They just need the letter approved.
Authorized. You're waiting on us, right? You can always do that, Kelly, don't wait on us.
Yeah, that's all right.
Do you have a motion to authorize the reissuance of a replacement certificate of sale?
I so move.
Second, I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay, reports from elected officials. Anything from sheriffs?
Nothing from the sheriff's office.
Mary, you got anything for us?
I don't.
Ron, you got anything from Granville?
Actually, I do.
Oh, same here.
I have the jail transportation agreement signed.
Oh, great.
Great.
And the council last night was requiring about the five thousand dollar request for the key for locks, and everyone knows kind of what that's gonna get for.
The five thousand dollars?
Yes.
That, that will actually pay for the people that man the locks, the operators.
Do they have certified operator? I mean, is it gonna be...
No, no. The, the agreement requires that the Corps of Engineers, money goes to the Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
The agreement requires that the Corps of Engineers active list, one of the proposals early on from the Corps of Engineers was to, to use retired operators. The Corps rejected that provision and said, "No, if, if we're opening the locks, we're using our own active operators." So the money is to pay the salaries and, and associated costs of the operators to be there on those days, that there are fishing tournaments and other events on the river.
Will that be an annual fee?
It's an annual donation, if you want, if you want to reopen it. What we're hoping to do is get this started, and then get some of the larger, be able to get some of the larger fishing and tournament people throughout the state and the region to come here and get them to pay it. So it's like seed, it's like seed money. We're trying to make an investment, get them here, and then, once we get them here, see if we can't get a little bit more money out of the pocket.
Is that, is, they wanted to know if that's five thousand across the board for everybody, or is it based on population, or based on where we're using?
Now, that's just strictly a request, and...
Well, I'm sure they're gonna approve it. They just wanted to ask some questions.
Well, basically, the development authority's gonna, five thousand, the city, Morgantown, we're gonna, five thousand. We got ten thousand from the state. We were, we were trying to up that to twenty, but we haven't been able to do that, but so far from the legislature, we've got, we've got ten thousand committed from that. And basically, we're just going around saying five thousand, you know? So whatever anyone can bear, we appreciate it.
Well, I'm sure they'll approve it, once they get the answers to the questions.
And we're also gonna monitor it for a year to see, you know, if there's a lot of interest in the, which is what we are hoping, to keep it open, and then we're hoping businesses will see the need for it to stay open, and then we're hoping maybe we can go for it in that direction. So I think it's a year-long pilot project to try and see whether it works or not, then we'll reevaluate, all of us will reevaluate it at that time.
We also wanna try to use this, because we've been making the Umbra primarily, and I've been working with them as a representative of the commission. We're also trying to get the Congress to change way they, the way they count vehicles using the river. They don't count recreational vehicles at all. It's purely commercial.
Right.
And we've got commercial interests that would use the river but are not willing to put two or three million dollars into port facilities when they have no guarantee that the Corps of Engineers will open the locks. They show up once a day, so that's what we're, we're caught in, this conundrum where, I know Greer has talked about, and there's one or two other groups that I've heard talk about, building river facilities up above north of Opakiska and Kildabrin, and, but to build those port facilities, you're talking about millions of dollars. And then, then they can only ship once a day by appointment, or, you know, one time a day by, by appointment, or sometimes not even every day. So, so it's, it's a problem with our government, both the federal and state level, is they're, they're not very progressive, and they're, they're like riding on a ship that's sinking, you know, "Let's move all the lifeguards, you know, let's move all the life vests and everything up here on this end, because this end's sinking," instead of taking the attitude, "We're gonna fix that hole, and we're gonna raise the ship. We're gonna raise all ships." That's, that's the situation with the Corps of Engineers. It's not the Corps of Engineers, I mean, it's the, the Congress and the president that has this attitude that I criticize. We have the same attitude in Charleston. Hopefully, that attitude will change. We're not a sinking ship. We're gonna fix the hole, and we're gonna raise the ship, and we're gonna raise a whole bunch of other ships along with us.
Excellent analogy.
That's what we're trying to do. Thank you very much for your participation. Kelly, do you have anything for us?
Nope, not today.
Okay. Diane, do you have anything?
No.
Jambi, you have anything?
Yeah. On Mason Dixon, this Saturday, from twelve to two, we have a little Christmas gathering with Santa Claus, and cookies and hot chocolate, and pictures, and this is a family gathering. So that's what we're doing. You believe in Santa Claus? I really can't tell you. Tell me. I'm a...
He's ordered a Santa Claus.
I just can't tell you, because I'm a believer in Santa Claus. I love hats, this guy.
You're not supposed to...
Don't ever forget that either.
Don't pull on Santa Claus's beard.
If I could speak from a Star City point of view, I'd do that.
Yes, Star City, yes, you may.
We also approved the transport fee last night to our council.
Great.
So I don't think it's been signed or sent down yet, but it should be coming shortly.
We really, really appreciate that. We had a meeting with the legislators yesterday, and that was, some of the legislators came with the County Commissioners Association regional meeting. We hosted it yesterday, and that was a big part of the discussion, you know, how to, how to divide the transportation cost, and it becomes really a money issue, a big money issue. Thank you, we appreciate that. Comments from, oh, I'm sorry. County Commissioners report. Thank you.
Three things. First of all, I don't know if you heard on the radio, but Jim Stallings did announce, and, and on behalf of the county commission, we wanna send our thoughts and prayers to them. He has announced that he has a tumor along the brain. He's gonna be operated on next Thursday. So we are hoping everything works well. He's gonna be going up to Pittsburgh, and he's very positive on the situation, so it's, he's hoping it's a lot better than what was first announced. So he is an integral part of this community, and we just wanted to pass on that, you know, we are, we are thinking about him. The second issue, the second issue, as a lot of discussion has been taken place, and the county commission has been receiving numerous phone calls concerning what is going on with the recycling process and the Solid Waste Authority, at this time, I believe, I'd like to report that, I believe, and trying to speak for, for all the commissioners, that for the past six months, we've been working on a solution to the situation. that for the past six months, we've been working on a solution to the situation, we've been monitoring very closely. The concern had been for the county commission, what we could and could not do. I, I want to thank Jambi, who we asked to take the initiative immediately contacting the Director of Solid Waste Management Board, and received the letter, and this, this is the first thing that needs to be stated, um, the response from Carol Throckmorton and the West Virginia Government said that she did a quick check to see if Montague County had enacted a recycling ordinance, they have not, and that is good in the sense that it doesn't obligate the commission to take on the responsibility of putting a countywide recycling program into place. Now, with that being said, there's nothing that obligates it, but I know the commissioners are very concerned and monitoring what we can do with recycling for the county. There is, uh, uh, we are, we are monitoring the situation, what we can and can't do, we are about to find out and talk with the different parties to see what our, um, what, what, you know, what we could do immediately and what we could do in the long-term approach. I want people to know, and I know people have gotten a lot of misinformation, and we were, and I was like everyone else, disappointed to read about it in the paper that they may be closing without us even knowing about it. However, we were specifically told in our meetings that there's nothing that we can do about it because we don't control the Solid Waste Authority, so I want to get that very clear. With that being said, we definitely want to monitor the situation, get involved somewhat with a process for recycling for the entire county, and treating everyone fairly and equitably, and Eldon, I don't know if you want to add on to that, but we are gonna continue this and see when, we're trying to be ahead of this and be progressive rather than wait until after the fact, so we have been monitoring, looking at, I don't know if you want to add anything at this time.
Well, I just want to add one thing that I've said this before, and, uh, being very active on the County Commissioners Association, Leadership Association of Counties, I'm involved in the training of many new officials, and most officials don't seem to understand, uh, new, newly elected officials at various levels, whether you're, you're a mayor, or a, a county commissioner, or a governor, when you, when you contribute taxpayers' funds to support some entity, whether they're a nonprofit entity or whatever, whatever structure they're under, the law requires, uh, that you monitor the expenditure of that funds, and those funds are only expended as you assign them to be expended.
Correct.
A lot of people don't understand that, so when we, when we question, uh, organizations like the Solid Waste Authority, and their response is, we don't work for you, you have no right to ask us any questions, and we're not gonna tell you anything, we have an obligation to taxpayer not to give them excess monies that we can't justify. People don't seem to understand that, they think they can come in here and say, I'm gonna do this, so I want the money, and you can't see what we're doing with it. I don't care whether it's the volunteer fire department, I don't care whether it's the Umbra situation, like your questions are right on point, is, what am I using this money for, how it's gonna be used? Every elected official has that obligation, you know that, Mayor, sitting in Westover, you gotta watch where that money goes, not just that you're giving it to this organization or this person, you gotta know how that money's actually spent, otherwise you could be both civilly and criminally liable for it. A lot of people don't understand that, and, uh, that's, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that it's, uh, the, the situation is as it's, uh, as it's developed into, but we knew this six months ago, we started working on this six months ago, now we didn't make a big deal out of it, weren't in the paper, we weren't criticizing, you know, if they want to go off and do their, do their thing, you know, that's, that's their choice to do, but, uh, the, the fact that we demand to monitor the monies, the taxpayers' monies as to how it's spent, certainly no grounds for criti- criticism, it should, it should be grounds for praise, that's what I want to say about it.
And I want to finalize it by stating, there's gonna be a lot of discussions, there's two sides to every issue, and that's fine, but I want it very clear that six months ago, we requested the county commissioners to start looking into single stream, similar to the city and the WVU, and we were specifically told that wasn't going to happen, so that'll be the first thing. Next thing, um, I have good news to report, on the steering committee on the recreational needs of our community, um, the nine of us met, we had two presentations, we have to decide by tomorrow which presentation we agree with and which one to move and what we would call Phase Two, this is something that I'm, Eldon, you're gonna be real pleased to find out, I thought we were gonna have to pay another five thousand dollars as everyone else, nope, Phase Two, which is next semester, is part of the money that we had provided in Phase One, so there's no cost to us, um, Phase Two, and I believe I can say this, that the consensus is that we want to move forward, the nine members, and that we, in Phase Two, will actually come up with the specifics and the costs of how to fund it, and it appears, and I don't mind saying this, that the two areas that we are looking at in some combination will be Mylan Park and First Ward Park. What that is at this time, we don't know, but it's clear that in both presentations, that's where we are looking at to develop, I, I think, a first-class recreational program. Um, we did also decide, and I want to clear that, we wanted to add one more member, so Eldon, you're aware of it, uh, we are gonna add a Board of Education member, which we had stated, we wanted to get the steering committee started, we believe that we cannot move on without the help of the Board of Education, and we want them to be privy to all the decision-making, so, they have been contacted, and they were, we'll be sending a representative, so we'll have ten representatives, so I'm very excited about that. The final thing, and I, I just want to ask, I just saw this on my desk, and Diane, I don't know if you've even seen it yet, and my question is, we don't have to answer except, what are we now, now what does this mean? I see it's a letter from Mr. Angotti, a lawyer, who's a friend of mine, but writes, I'm writing this letter on behalf of the attorney for the Star City Volunteer Fire Department in reference to the attached proposed mutual aid respond agreement. My client does not agree to the terms contained in said proposed agreement for whatever reasons, and will not execute it. So, do we need to put this on a work session to figure out what exactly does that mean? Does that mean they're not gonna be a part? And again, you don't have to answer, I just, I, we just got this.
Well, I, I, I've got it here too, and I...
Yeah, we just got this on our desk.
I'm extremely disappointed because Star City was involved, representatives of Star City was sitting right back here, we, they were involved in negotiating this whole thing.
They agreed to it.
If, uh, if, if, if they wanted Mr. Angotti to be a participant in this, negotiating this agreement, we did it for nine months, nine months we negotiated this agreement, with Star City participating in this, and now we get a letter saying, no, we don't agree with it? He sat right back here and said, I said, are you finding this acceptable? He said, yes, it's acceptable, and now we get this letter at the end of the year, another like four or five months later, six months later, say, from this attorney? The attorney should have been here, if they had problems with it, so, as, as for me, if they don't want to be a part of it, I'm...
I know, my only, my only concern is, and again, I don't know, but maybe we need to ask Mike Wolf, how does this will affect nine-one-one and emergency calls and the people in Star City?
I'd go along with that.
And, and my concern being, I want it very clear that this is not Montague County saying something.
It's not city, it's Star City either, we need to make that clear, it's Star City Volunteer Fire Department.
It's the Star City Volunteer Fire Department saying they're not be a part of it, which may have a major effect on nine-one-one and emergency responses in that area, so that's my big concern, it's a safety issue.
Why don't you check with Mike Wolf and Scott Crouch?
Yeah, and if they can send us...
What, what, what they're, uh...
In English, what this means.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I've been, I've been a lot of places in the last five days, sort of meeting both ends, but the, the one thing that I want to bring up today, was something that came out of our, our legislative session, meeting with our legislators yesterday. We, we have talked in our leadership forum, we've had our leadership forum last, last Wednes- last Wednesday, and that, that's going very well, I am very, very pleased that the cooperation between, uh, the leadership at all levels in Montague County, with, with the municipalities and with the, uh, with the various organizations and groups from Main Street, Morgantown, the Chamber of Commerce, and so many other groups, Board of Education participates, so I'm very pleased that, that the people that attend are very pleased, uh, they, they express to me all, all the time how pleased that what, uh, what we started, you know, uh, is working, is continuing to work, and, and I know this, this commission has been very, uh, committed to collaborations, discussions, to respecting our differences, but not allowing those differences to interfere with the other things that we can work together on. One of the things that came out of that some time ago, as a matter of fact, I think in our very first meeting, was the need for a regional jail. Preston County Commissioners were there as well yesterday, and one thing that we talked about was, how come the state notoriously in any region, and, and not all, not in all cases, but in a lot of cases, divides Montague in one group and Preston County in another group? When we're so close together? We sort of, one on, you know, w- w- we're, we're so close together on so many issues, uh, in fact, a radio station from Kingwood, uh, the Dave Price Representative was talking to me about Main Street needs to advertise up there because this, many people in Kingwood in Preston County sees their main street as Morgantown, as being their main street, uh, and want to participate in the activities and stuff, not that they don't, Briston and Terryata and, and Kingwood don't have their own main streets, but they like to, they like to participate in, in the activities here and what they consider the big city. So, I, I've always wondered why that is, um, where Preston County, uh, has a long distance from there to Elkins to take their, to take, to transport their pr- their prisoners. We transfer all the way into Doddrich County, and we have what, seventy, I think it's seventy-five miles each way or something, thereabout, and, uh, takes a lot of money, and so, the group has asked for the re-, uh, to, to look at regional jails, well, I brought that up both to the governor's office over, over the last few months, uh, last year and a half, I guess, as, as well as to Joe DeLong, and I know, uh, the Sheriff, Sheriff Kizner and a couple other people, uh, I think Darrell Summers, Magistrate Summers was also there, a couple other people have represented to Joe DeLong why we need another regional jail, and the response has been, we have no money, we're not gonna be building any more jails, forget about it, just be quiet, we don't want to hear about it. We got a little di- different reception yesterday on that issue, and what, uh, Delicate Frich and Freshhour and Senator, uh, Lenhart, I don't know if Delicate Summers or, or Statler were still there at that time, I think they had left at that time. Ask us to try to go to maybe WVU and someone and ask them to do a cost-benefit analysis for us, that they would be receptive if we had some...
Documentation.
Documentation to ask for an additional regional jail that would service Taylor, uh, service Taylor, Preston, Montague, and Marion.
That'd be great.
So, I thought, well, that's one up from what I heard...
Yeah, I think it's great.
Before, so I, I would, uh, I wanted to report on that, especially since the cities were represented, three of them anyway, here, uh, but I think we'll, we'll, we'll try to do that, and go ahead, as a commission, try to go ahead and lead the, lead that, but would probably, in our next forum, uh, Community Leadership Forum, we'll ask the towns to join in, uh, with, with trying to help us, uh, secure the, the proper numbers, and Preston County wants to participate too in doing the numbers, so that's why we involve their town, their county, and between Preston County and Montague County, they, that would be the key cost and out benefit analysis, that these two counties. So I wanted to report on that, I wanted to give the, any of the representatives from any of the towns, uh, an opportunity to respond to that. Mayor Johnson, do you have any comment to add to that?
No, I just, you know, I've been disappointed in the whole system, because when they first, years ago, when they first proposed the regional jails, there were supposed to be twice as many as we ended up with, so it was kind of a sham to begin with, and then a lot of people suffered because of the, the amount of distance that they have to drive just to transport a prisoner. We were under the understanding that there would be almost twice as many as what they ended up with. Anything in that, anything in that direction, we would definitely be willing to, uh, do what we can do as, on our, on our part, so...
Yeah, not only there's supposed to be twice as many, but as Joe DeLong said, and I hope I don't get him in trouble, uh, but the, the original design of these regional jail systems is the, the two or three or four counties that were supposed to participate in these regional jail systems were to actually do the operation, and to appoint the overseen of the, the management of those regional jails, the counties were themselves, and then they were to have operational control and appoint the regional jail authority that oversees regional jail. The governor and the legislature will never let go of it, and what in effect they've created is a second division of corrections, instead of the way it was supposed to be, which was supposed to be that, that, the, uh, participating counties were supposed to be the management and control of running, running the regional jail, and the regional jail authority, but that's, that's never happened. Yes, Ron?
I think I would throw Marion County into that mix as well.
Yeah, I was gonna include Mar- Marion, I thought Marion, Taylor, Preston, and Montague would be a good four, four group for regional jail somewhere around Gladesville or, or, uh, Brackton Road, or somewhere, somewhere in that, that neighborhood, sort of, to the south, off of sixty-eight, uh, type place, I, I, I don't know, that would have to be studied, but yeah, Marion County would, would be a key, and maybe we want to include them in the cost-benefit analysis too, that was your suggestion?
Yeah. I take that, yes, I agree with that.
It still takes them an hour to get there.
Right.
Yes, that's true.
Twenty minutes to get there to here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good idea, appreciate that. Jimmy, you want to speak for Star City?
I really, personally, I would probably agree with that, I think it should be closer, I would want to supersede what the mayor or the council would think without discussing it in front of the councils, uh, I'd, I'd rather hold that off, I personally, I would agree.
Great, okay, thank you very much, that's the preliminary thing, I'm going back down this afternoon, uh, with the West Virginia Association of Counties, they're having the prep school for new county officials, we had twenty-nine new county commissioners, uh, so we got, we got, not only we got a bunch of newbies in the legislature, we got, uh, a big chunk of newbies in commissioners, so I'm gonna go back down and finish the training this afternoon, so, uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the public? You sure you don't want to say something?
You stayed the whole meeting, it's trivia, I'm so...
We're impressed, we appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate, you can see we get large numbers here.
Ben, did we cheer you up, Eddie?
Now he's got a whole bunch of things to write on, he has a whole bunch of ideas.
Janet, you want to say anything? No, I can't even get Janet to speak up, okay, do I ever...
Move to adjourn?
Second, I have a motion, the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we are adjourned, thank you very much.